Let us pray. While we come today thanking you for another day in our city, we once again give you thanks for your presence and your provision as we continue to move forward. We once again ask you for your wisdom and guidance on this Board of Mayor and Commissioners as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and its people. Bless our staff, our employees, our citizens, and those that attend us today. Go with us now and throughout the day, in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most received by the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close lights sign. Hearings reports. Commissioners? I'd just like to invite, uh, welcome everyone today for our new meeting. If you haven't noticed that there on the, on the playground there, uh, we have new playground equipment at Central Park. People have been playing on it. This is a new addition that we just got installed. And also, I know my other Commissioners might comment, but we have two events coming up. This, our Arts and Music Festival this Saturday on the Riverfront is a first, is historic. And so, we invite you to come down to the Riverfront this Saturday. And also, postcards and photos from Ashland will be in the Paramount Arts Center next Thursday, put on by our own David Carter. So, I just wanted to make you aware of those events, and I thank you for being here today. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Dainin there?
No, I wasn't gonna talk about O-Yo.
Oh, go ahead.
No, it's fine. Uh, just a little more information about O-Yo. O-Yo, um, like Commissioner Goode said, it is an historic event on our Riverfront first music and arts festival to ever be held there. So, that's, uh, I thank that this Commission for approving that without a lot of us in sight. Um, starts at, gates open at noon. The event actually starts at 1:00 and then the gates close at 11:00. There are nine different acts, uh, the Arts and Arts Festival and some art installations that will be there as well, so.
We hope, we hope a lot of people come out.
Tickets are available at the Paramount.
Yeah.
Weather's gonna be perfect.
Yes.
It is gonna be perfect. Thanks, Commissioner. City Mayor?
Just really quickly to follow up on something that Commissioner Goode had said. While the playground is available, we still need to install A F orders and fall protection and then determine some inclusiveness and accessibility, which is natural, and that'll occur after the playground gets up. And also, I'd like to introduce Lorraine Woolery. She's gonna give a, a quick brief on the Community Development Block Grant, uh, some detailed information. It's also gonna dovetail into one of the new agenda items that we have on the agenda today.
Hi, thank you for letting me come speak to you today. Um, I work with the Community Development Block Grant. It's part of the Department of Community and Development. And it is federal funding that's sent to us from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And it is mostly used for housing, infrastructure, and better economic conditions within Ashland. Um, its target audience is to benefit low and in, low and moderate income people. And we currently have three target areas, East Central, Pollard Mills, and City Central. We deal with safe, affordable housing. We assist with assistance to homeless and to prevent homelessness. Public improvements, which includes streets and sidewalks, and we assist with social services. We're looking to positively impact economic conditions within the city. Our current allocation is $577,434, but we also have approximately $500,000 carryover dollars from previous years that were not used. And we plan on capitalizing using those funds this year. We propose to start a storm drainage improvement project within Pollard Mills. Um, today you'll be looking over a contract for engineering services for the design, bidding, survey, mapping, um, which would include Dixon Street from Pollard Road to Blackburn Avenue. We also supply money to multiple social service providers within the city. Um, this just gives you a rough idea of who we're giving those funds to. We provide assistance for safe, affordable housing, which pays for code enforcement, officer, home rehabilitation, and this year we're excited to be helping with energy efficient windows for the Claylow area. We provide funds for Ashland Child Development and the Senior Center, and very excited to be working on the Safe Harbor ADA compliant transitional unit, which will provide a kitchen and bathroom and living area for those that might need assistance with wheelchairs. Currently, we're working on the Women-Owned and Ethnic Minority Loan Program. We have $100,000 budgeted this year. For each $25,000 that's given to a owner of a CD business, they're required to have one, excuse me, create or retain one full-time position. It's a five-year, eligible loan, and it's to purchase a fixed asset. Um, and they must retain or create a job for a low to moderate income person. Part of our budget has to do with administration, and currently, $105,000 is budgeted towards this. And this covers environmental reviews, action plans, um, different reports, public notices to our citizens, training, fair house activities, um, and lead-based painting studies. We just finished the CAPER, which was approved approximately two weeks ago, and it showed the different social services that have assisted within our area. CARES does much of the resource and referral. Senior Center does socialization, meals, um, and exercise programs. And currently, we're working on a project at Deport Terrace where 103 families will benefit from the new sidewalk steps and handrails. In front of you today, um, there's three main items that you'll review. We have the Analysis of Impediments, which is a study of how we can help discourage or alleviate discrimination within our city. There's the Contract for the Pollard Mills Storm Drain Improvement Engineering Contract, and an amended action plan where we're requesting to add money to a project for the police substation in East Central Neighborhood. On Monday, we will have a hearing for the amended action plan. It'll be here in the chambers at 5:30. We welcome all comments and suggestions from citizens that could be, um, called to us, emailed, faxed, or if they're able to attend the meeting on Monday. And last but not least, um, a lot of our information is on the website, which is listed on the screen, or our phone number. DJ Reimer will be working out in this neighborhood and meeting with citizens. So, if they're not able to actually come to the city building, he's able to go to a business or a home to assist. Anyone have any questions?
I can't obviously vote on C V D matters, but I do wanna thank you for the work that you provided today. And I really wanna commend the city management team for providing this to us in this manner. I think it's easy to understand. I think it's very informative. It's a nice overview, and I really appreciate the work you did on it.
We also have information in the hall back if anyone would like to pick that up to take with them. And then if they have specific questions, please call us.
Lorraine, I think you did a outstanding job. I think you've been cited for being one of the federal resources of what wonderful job you're doing. We appreciate that. I, I enjoyed you serving on a committee, a subcommittee, to review these minority and women loans. And you're very professional, prepared, and it was a pleasure to work with you on that.
Thanks.
This part of our meeting is public participation for items on this on agenda. Anyone with a comment or request may come to the podium and address the Commission concerning matters related to city business, services, or personnel. Comments related to election issues or concerning personal disputes will not be allowed, personal attacks, or obscene or threatening claims will not be tolerated. Presentations are limited to five minutes. A yellow light indicates 30 seconds remain, and a red light means the time limit has expired. Only one speaker per minute per subject. No action will be taken in this meeting. Those who comment or ask to fill out an inquiry complaint form and leave it with the city clerk for distribution to the proper city department. Now, we don't, we try to go with the lights. I'm not used to that. I've been here almost two years now, and I'm still not used to that. And I'm not gonna say, hey, that's it, you can't finish that statement. But basically, we do wanna kinda keep, keep the meeting moving, and, and if there is an issue that would take much longer than that, we certainly need that inquiry complaint form filled out. And we'll, we'll get to that issue, uh, one-on-one or with the right department head, uh, you know, today or tomorrow. So, we, we wanna encourage public participation when you have issues with, you know, anything going on in the city. And don't, don't worry about the lights. We will eventually tell you to hold off, but don't worry about it.
My name is Maya Hamilton, and this is my fifth grade teacher, Ms. Minton. And I am the president of my fifth grade class at Crab Elementary. I will start by asking two questions. Have you ever been bullied or caught up in drama, and would you like to stop the drama? If the answer is yes, then please help me create something called the Bunny Bench. It would be a place for anyone feeling down, who's been bullied, upset about drama, or lonely to go. Then, if someone sees someone sitting on the, on the bench, they would know they are in need of a bunny. Someone to make them feel better. I was inspired by a Girl Scout troop who created it and thought it would be a good idea to bring to our playground in the park where the older students have recess. We are asking to donate, you to donate a regular old green park bench to fix up as a bunny bench. Our art teacher, Mr. Borg, has agreed to help us decorate it. We would also place a plaque on the bench with instructions on how to use it so everyone in our community, not just the students at Crab, can use a bunny bench. In addition to the donation of the bench, we ask that there be a way to secure it to a specific location in the area we use for recess, so that people don't move or distort it. I have one more concern about the safety of our walkers and safety patrol. I would like for us to have big flashing lights for the cars to slow down for the safety of our walkers, walkers, teachers, students, safety patrol, and parents. I hope you've enjoyed my speech and will consider my proposal. Thank you for your time, and remember to pick flowers and not bites. Now, does anybody have any questions?
Well, I really enjoyed your speech.
Yes.
And I enjoy that you're from Crab Elementary with your new principal. Would you like to introduce your new principal to the audience?
My new principal is Mr. Tolbert, and he has done a wonderful and a fascinating job with fly and whistle.
Mr. Tolbert, who I've known since a baby. We're so proud of you, your new principal. Tried to get him home for years while I was superintendent, and he waited till I left to go. But I'm, but I'm still happy about it. God bless you. Any other things?
I just have, I just have a, a comment. I don't know if you're aware, Maya, it's the International Day of the Girl. So, I just want to personally commend you for coming here and, and standing up and saying, this is what I want, what we want. Um, I, I don't think there's any issue with donating a bench if we have one available.
I think we can find a decent, I think we can find a really nice decent bench, and we'll, we'll turn it over to, uh, city manager and our clerk, you know. Sean Burry, where are you at? There Sean. Maybe that'd be your direct link, and, uh, depending upon where you want it, and, um, I think it's a wonderful idea. Uh, did you come up with it?
Um, no, I, I'm inspired from the Girl Scout.
Yeah. This is a good day to come.
You find you.
This is a good day to come as a young lady, and Ms. Minton, you're one of our superstar Commissioners.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. So, Sean Burry, back there, hold his hand up, so you might, uh, work with him, and he's very accessible, uh, and, and we'll, we'll deal with that for that, okay?
Maya, you did a wonderful job.
Thanks for coming.
Hey, I appreciate, I had, got the opportunity to have lunch with them prior to coming here today and discuss some other issues that are of interest to the school and our system. And all I can say is, you are a shining light for our public schools, and we just keep it up. Thank you, thank you for caring and wanting to do better. Appreciate you.
Well, thank you for letting me propose.
And also, we'll, I will turn over your request on the flashing light to our track and task force. And, uh, safety in our town is number one, and safety for our kids is, is number one. One A is everybody else's. Kids is number one. But we'll get them on it, and, uh, and it may be something we need to do all, all of our patrol areas. And we patrol them heavily, so we've got police there all the time, but, you know, that may be a really good thing for, uh, especially early in the morning, when people don't have it all together when they're driving to work or something. I always worry about my patrol, patrol kids. So, thanks for bringing that up to me.
Thank you.
All right. Chief, you got that?
I don't think anybody else is on their way up, but I'll step up here and ask a couple things. Burden on that, 2724 St. Avenue. Uh, first of all, I'm gonna thank the Commission, Mayor, for your support of the United Way 5K race. Uh, you know, worked with us on the course, which I see the Salvation Army is awesome. And, you know, we appreciate your support on that, and it looks like, uh, what you are hulking for the Salvation Army is something we're building on the long term. We raised almost $70,000, all of it going toward childhood, uh, education in the Ashland, in the dent school systems. So, and in fact, next year, I don't know if you know this, Mayor, but your granddaughter will be the race director next year.
Pressure's so fast.
Uh, she's a junior, and we need a young lady to lead us. So, like, like, not, not Lily, not the Ashland.
Lily, a couple more years, man.
Like. Uh, I'm here on a couple PSAs, and that's not, uh, blood test PSAs. These are public service announcements. Number one, Rotary Public Service Announcement. We have an upcoming event in which the Commission, with the exception of Amanda, I don't know if you've got a Rotary connection or not, but I know all the Commission has a Rotary connection, either former Rotarians or spouses of Rotarians. Well, we have a movie event on October 28th at the Paramount in conjunction with World Polio Day. This involves nine Rotary Clubs in West Virginia, Southern Ohio, and, uh, in Kentucky. So, uh, we're showing the movie Breathe, which is a movie about a polio survivor. And it's our goal to sell out the Paramount on that day. I have tickets if anybody needs those, $10 donation. I have posters that I'll leave with you. Posters have been put out throughout town. Had one at Starbucks somehow or another, it got removed. But, uh, these posters are out there for, for folks, and, uh, we appreciate the Commission's support, the city's support. The second thing is, uh, as, toward bullying, and we'll go toward the bullying of, of our seniors, elder abuse. I'm a member of the Elder Abuse, FICO Elder Abuse Prevention Council. On October 31st, Halloween Day, it's no joking matter, but, uh, we do this each year. We're having an education effort at, working with Action Community Technical College Workforce Solutions. Uh, we're doing a presentation on that day in the morning and the afternoon on, don't be an accidental dealer. In other words, don't let your elderly parents or yourself become a dealer of opioids or other drugs. And, uh, this education effort is in conjunction with Fordhead State University, Operation Unite, Congressman Rogers, Pathways Inc., Ronnie Nunley will be one of our presenters. Nancy Hale with Operation Unite is working with us in the regard of this. This will be at ACTC. You can sign up through ACTC Workforce Solutions. And if you know of anyone that needs CEUs, as in social work CEUs, this is a great opportunity to be educated. I would ask, while I'm here, toward the, the elder abuse, uh, we often meet at the, uh, city police and use the, the meeting space, and we invite all the law enforcement from throughout the area. And we would certainly welcome Ashland Police Department participating with us on our monthly or bi-monthly meetings. We'd certainly welcome them participating in this training as well. So, something to think about. And then, the last one's not a PSA, but more of an issue, and I'm probably flashing the red already, but, uh, 29th Street, uh, I'm running days, I'm down in the flatlands now, so I run from the top of the hill down to the flatlands, and I run down 29th Street continually. And I know y'all have held back money in regard to the issues there. As I'm running down the street, I, every day I see more cracks in the curves, I see more cracks in the concrete. And I don't see anything on this agenda here discussing that. And I know y'all had discussed it a couple of Commissions ago, a couple of Commission meetings ago, so I, I certainly hope that y'all are holding some feet to the fire regarding that. Because what was done there toward curves and concrete on sidewalks, and I know you talked, Mayor, about the road itself.
You kind of murdered, and you, you got that down? Is there a long stretch? There, there are actually two different contractors. Did some of that work, and it could be one or the other? Uh, yeah, we've got a year's warranty on all that, and, and Ryan and the contractor understand we're, we're not gonna accept Shawty Burrow.
Well, what they've done, they've gone back and attempted to, to fill it with patch.
Yeah.
I mean, it looks like, uh, my dad does work like that, right? You know what I mean?
We've identified what we think are all the problems, and we're working with the contractor to get this fixed, but we would, I would request that, uh, just ensure we don't miss anything. If you take a picture, you send it to the House of Health, and that way we'll have it.
Yeah.
We can make sure it gets ticked off.
I'll be glad to.
Well, and I keep in mind, Mr. Eastwood, filling some joint, talking, or mortar, and that's not gonna do it. You know it. You're an engineer. I know, and I'm not an engineer, but I, I know that doesn't hold up with the winters we have around here. So, you cut it out, and you put a different.
You replace it.
Chuck a curve in there.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We appreciate all that input. Anyone else like to appear before the Commission today? Appreciate y'all being here. And I might, often. All right. Old business, I don't know.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, "In ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizes and directs the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland and Greats West Virginia Property and Land Management regarding parking and landscaping in 1241 Carter Avenue on the city's right."
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close lights sign. Item B.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, "In ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizes and directs the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and the Auto Bill Trucking Bank for the purchase of gravel, stone, and sand for the Department of Public Services and Utilities Operations."
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close lights sign. Item C.
In ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizes the submission of the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing as required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development in order for continued Community Development Block Grant and Housing Choice Voucher Funding with the City of Ashland Department of Community and Economic Development.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I recuse myself.
Item D.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, "In ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting the Housing Choice Voucher Program Payment Standards for the City of Ashland Community and Economic Development Department, Division of Assistant Housing."
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close lights.
I recuse myself.
Item E.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, "In ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizes the reclassification of the Benefits Administrator Assistant City Clerk, ABC Administrator, in adopting the revised job description for the position, authorizing the reclassification of the Risk Manager in adopting the revised job description for the position in the Department of General Government, Division of Human Resources, and adopting the authorized positions reflecting the changes of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan, Classification Plan, as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously meant."
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close lights sign. Any other old business? Clark? Yes, okay. Consent agenda.
The resolution, the City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent, consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of October 11th, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a clarification for the public's sake. Number five, we approved the festival on the River in January, and we just started changing, we changed, the name changed and the time that the port was gonna close. We're not waiting until the two days before to approve a festival, so everybody's aware of that.
Number three, item three, uh, is this, I know you've mentioned in a previous discussion about recycling, that we were, uh, we had some aging vehicles.
Yes.
And this satisfied some of the problems we're having with the.
It does, Commissioner, and just for the good of the community, uh, this was already planned in the FY18 budget. Forty percent of our current fleet have reached or reaching the end of the eight to 10-year life cycle. Of the eight trucks, we have, three are not operational, they're to the point where they're beyond repair, and two are past the estimated lifespan. So, we have three that are under eight years old. This keeps our fleet as capable as possible.
Yeah, I've had compliance, uh, leaky trucks and things like that, so this, I'm sure will help some of that.
It's a real issue. I think anytime, you know, somewhere trucks go that are dumped, I know a couple times in one shift, there may be more than that. And so, that's, that's the wear and tear, going back and forth.
Sanitation also, they're, they're taking a little bit more risk with a lot of the things that they pick up, uh, which some construction materials, for example, are a risk, so you make judgment calls when they're out there. That also adds to the wear and tear of the trucks, but I think, I think they're the right place on, um, meeting customer expectation, excuse me, citizen expectations, and also trying to protect the trucks as much as possible.
Any other questions? So, number four, are we waiving this?
Salvation Army?
Just to review the bid, Salvation Army came in a couple of weeks ago, had quoted a number of $1,477 that the city would charge to conduct their Bells of Hope 5K. Uh, that was on a supposition that they were either gonna be on Route A or Route B after they filled out the actual request for the event. Our special events committee determined that the cost would be $525. We do not have a resolution or an ordinance that prevents the, uh, the board from waiving, something for consideration by the board that all are considering in the future. My recommendation, because we've been consistent except up to the Salvation Army race a couple of months ago, would be that they either run city utilizing Central Park Route or pay the $525.
And I wanna say that, uh, I love having these races of all kinds, because the, there's never question about the quality of the organization that's trying to raise the funds, and, and many times it also brings positive tension to what that organization's trying to do. So, I know all of us up here are 100% supportive of that. It does cost us additional funds that aren't, you know, that aren't budgeted, and otherwise it just comes out of taxpayers' pocket when you do it. Just so you know, we, as I've said a year before, there's no little magical pot of money, we reach in and pull a little bit more out. If we do this, I'm not, I'm not opposed to waiver on this today, but, um, we have to have something at some point, and whether it's now or budget time, where the organization, I know Mr. Amanda would probably agree 100% with this, would come in to us just like they come in and request a city contribution. Where you come, come in at that time, and you say, we wanna run this particular race, and this is what it costs, and how much it's gonna cost us, and they could ask us for that contribution, and we make it at that time, we don't have to deal with stuff all year long. It's already done. That, that's my recommendation.
I think that's a good one.
And whether, whether, you know.
Well, I think that, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just, if I don't say it, I'm gonna forget. I think that's a good recommendation for a race that doesn't want to utilize the route that we have designated as the free route. You know, we already, we've already put in the work to say, you can run this route, it's not gonna cost you anything. It still costs us, but that's the least that we can do.
That's my, well, I'm not putting it in promotion.
No, 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 but just as we're, as we're thinking about it, I think, I think we need to recognize that we have taken.
I'm assuming that they know a year, year from year if we're gonna do a race, and we do, you know, our budget here is start March and go, so we have to have a budget begin June. I would like to do it that way, 'cause that's when we're looking at all the finances and all. We might be able to say, well, we can, we're on charge of half of that.
Mayor, you could, what I thought you were alluding to is put in its part against contributions.
Yeah, that's what.
I think the end date on that is, is in February, so that sets up the discussions for the budget.
I think the end date on that is, is in February, so that sets up the discussions for the budget. These will clearly fall into category four, they're not dues and fees, et cetera, or summer motion, et cetera. So, that would make sense if they're out of form with the request that we got committed that can rank the stack.
I'm for that.
Okay, and if we, and if we're waiving once the rest of the year, I don't know if we're going to or not. If we're about even playing field, maybe that's it all.
I think that's, that's probably the best route until we, if we're moving forward with the next one.
Well, we can't, we certainly can't say we're going to agree with it, but not you. That's not fair.
No, that's what I'm thinking.
And we did it before, so...
That's kind of the force. We may not be able to do it all. We may be able to do it all. But if we do, we have to pull money from somewhere else. If we're all together budgeted, we can see where we're pulling from and go from there. I'd bet you have everybody already have this set, and they don't have to keep kind of doing us on a...
I think that's a great idea.
Yes, okay.
So, you actually, so is your motion to pull more from the consent agenda?
Yes.
I'll second that.
We have a person second.
Well... We, he can, we can amend that motion.
Okay.
So, we amend that motion on the floor.
I heard the motion. I didn't hear it. It was the second.
So, we use that as a motion to amend the...
To remove item consent agenda. Four from the consent agenda, is the motion I heard.
Okay. All favor?
Aye.
There was a second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, Senator. And now a motion to receive or approve consent agenda without...
I think a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
And all favor?
Aye.
Trying to level the plate field for a while.
Exactly. She said that as a separate item now, number four. I think we waived the fee this time until we review these at budget time, and we waited for the Salvation Army.
Do we have any more races that have been our way this year?
That's the only two that run that course, United Way and Salvation Army.
I'll second that.
That particular course, there's other people's request, Route A and Route B. Shaun, do you have, excuse me, Mr. Murray, do you have any data points that anybody's requested anything throughout the rest of the calendar year?
We have to review the schedule and forward on it. Mr. O'Man, what do we charge y'all for that way?
You waived the fee.
Okay.
But when I was here initially, coming up with a smaller fee, which I agree with completely.
I appreciate that. And that figure you came up with or had was not approved yet. I want to emphasize that to you. But you had no reason not to make that.
I just had what Mr. Oset should tell us.
Yeah, so, what, 500 may be a reasonable fee.
Can I clarify here that we can't give a cost total or a cost estimate until we know what the route is? So, we know Route A and Route B are approximately $1,477. That could vary depending on the time that the event is run. And so, when somebody comes in with a route request, there's a process. We have a committee that's set up primarily with the street department, the police, and fire. They give an estimate of what their cost would be, and that's what we give back to the requesting agency. And I do understand there was a misunderstanding on the representation of $1,477.
This has nothing to do with anybody, but, you know, there are a lot of city employees, street departments, and so forth, who are involved in making these races safe that don't want to work on Saturday. They don't want the overtime, the time, it doesn't mean anything. They want to be with their family like all of you do, and like I do. But just, we, we work through those things. Just so you know, it's not always just, "Hey, yeah, oh, gosh, y'all want to do that? I want to go and set those horses up and wait around." Luckily, the races don't last very long, but it still pulls them away. Jack, I don't know if you've heard, you hear much directly, but I have, I've heard those things. So, it may be the kind of thing we can move around other departments if, in fact, the obvious street department, you know, did particularly want to help that day, there are other departments. I'm sure the Sanitation Works would be glad to fill in. I may be off base saying that. That's something you need to deal with. I'm just saying, we can't not have a race on Saturday where employees don't particularly want to get the time and a half working there. But I want you to know that's an issue that we deal with, and they bring it up. So, okay, so most of them forward, waive that?
Yes.
Okay. All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, Senator. Okay, so we're, we're meeting with that a little bit, I hope. We want people running. We want people making money for their organization. We don't want our taxpayers to always put too big a deal for it.
But I think your recommendation is part of the budget time.
Yeah.
That they get these in my budget time.
And we'll get, we'll go through, everybody that's done it this year for sure, we usually know, we'll contact those people to make sure it's in the deadline.
We've sent letters out to people that have requested gifting contributions in the past, and it's easy enough to add whatever 10 or 15 of them raised.
Good. Okay, great. New business, I don't know.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance of the City of Asheville, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Asheville and GRW Engineers, Inc. to provide engineering services for the Pollard Metals Draining Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed $421,000, the $100,000 to be paid from community development block grant funds and the utility fund."
Someone?
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, the only thing I'm going to, I feel, I can speak on this because it's not 100% CDVG money, but I had discussed previously in the past, in the past, about having a subcommittee, maybe of capital projects, established, maybe appointed by the mayor, that we could review any capital projects similar to the Pollard Metals Draining Project and others, the projects coming up, even our sewage treatment plant. And maybe that it included our city management, a couple of board members, even maybe a citizen, as we review these things. Gives us a little bit more insight, helps maybe get information back to the community in preparation for these projects. Yes.
So, the next step on that is, I believe we discussed in the last board meeting, is giving the results of the needs assessment. I think we're going to cover the majority, if not all, of the things that are on the table in the needs assessment break-in, which the needs assessment was done. And that's just a matter of setting up time with you all. So, what I hear you saying, Commissioner, is to set that up for a public meeting collectively, not one on one or one on two sessions.
Well, that's with the current projects. I think he's, it's talk on wider scope here, not just that.
Yes, yes.
Not just water, water lines or sewer plants.
Mr. Perkins brought up in the budget meetings when we were talking about the water, all of the water improvements and everything. I think you said that you would appoint somebody, you and me, I think, if we decided to do that.
I think a citizen, I think, you know, it'd always be good to pull some of our, not older people, but, you know, I think we're all pretty smart. But I think we've got people in our community that admit that are retired engineers, people that, you know, could, could capture us as citizens who are...
Insight.
Who pay the work.
We may not be thinking about.
That's exactly right.
And we may not be.
We need to work on that, then. Maybe we can work on getting a list of people who'd be willing to do it. And it wouldn't take up a lot of time. It's just when these projects come up. That's a great idea.
That helps us to be able to answer any questions for this body and businesses.
Yeah, and I think that's mainly the goal is, in the subcommittee, you know, I don't want to say we, how many times we need to meet.
No, absolutely.
But with the scale and scope of the projects that we've got coming up here, I think it would help us as a body to have more insight into the pre-planning, planning, implementation, follow-up, even grading how the project went. If those committees were in place, that gives us the ability to, I think, do, do our jobs better.
I think it's a good idea. I think that, for instance, even on this one, it certainly is not too late at all, I mean, to get something set up to go over with GRW, have a committee go over GRW, so all of us in layman's terms, understanding real scope and intent. You know, we get copies, we look at contracts sometimes, it doesn't mean a whole lot to us. And I think had we had such a committee in place, 29th Street, we at least would have been more educated to respond to our public about...
Issues.
What always appeared to be deficiencies and how we're done, and maybe what we think was.
Correct.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, so you'd like a committee set up that will review projects. Is there a threshold that you want? Is there a cost total that you all have? And I would think that this would be probably a near weekly or bi-weekly.
I think we may do.
We could probably do monthly.
It'd be quarterly, probably, if somebody pulled together.
We usually have a formal...
Whenever we had a major project, Jack, we just, we, we as a group can determine, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or more.
I'm just trying to get the sequence now. So, before it comes on the agenda to see it, so that...
I think similar to the, maybe the TTF.
TTF, yeah.
And as needed, and in this case, you got, you got a bunch of million dollar projects, multi-million dollar projects.
So, is there a threshold or just as you all?
Do you want to set a dollar limit?
Let's think about that one.
I'm showing my ignorance. I apologize. What's the...
No, I'm saying, if we do, you're not, you're not going to want to be in a stockwater place. That's a good question.
Five thousand dollars.
What is it?
Five thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Anything more than five thousand dollars is a capital project.
Well, then I think, I mean, in my opinion, if it goes similar to the TTF, I mean, the matters we deal with in TTF are sometimes very small.
Well, it isn't a five inch...
No, and it's not financially related.
Safety related.
Right. I think it'd have to be a quarter to five thousand dollars.
I, I...
If you're affecting the whole neighborhood, I think that's what we're kind of thinking about.
Right.
Listen, it's, I think it's a good idea. I think we need to think about it a little bit and put some, put some thoughts in with the city manager. You know, maybe five people. If I already pointed you through that, only means three more do, which sounds good to me. But, you know, I will, I will seek out in the community, a citizen, and, and, you know, people are watching this, and people will read our daily paper. And I'm sure that Mr. Booth, the editor, will put something in there about, you know, if you're interested in serving on a committee to kind of reduce some of these bigger contracts that we do to help us as commissioners, and also help the public better understand what's going on.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking your bigger scale projects. I don't want, I mean, if it's going to affect the neighborhood and it's a smaller dollar figure, I don't think we should be excluded from that, because obviously neighborhood impact is important to us.
Yeah. We'd have to be a little more subjective on some of that.
And we may be able to defer some of that to the city manager's discretion as to what comes before us.
I don't want to look at it at fifty-five or a thousand.
Yeah.
We, I mean, we're going to see those anyway, and there not going to be a big magnitude of those. But I believe, you know, a hundred thousand plus, we ought to take a look at. And, and so, we have better knowledge. We're not, not that we're opposing it.
No, I think it's, I think it's exactly what you said. It's getting, it's getting neighborhood input, it's getting a different viewpoint that we may be missing as a body. And, and things that they may, citizens, we get it all the time, great ideas from them.
Absolutely.
And some of the stuff is, well, if you'd have done this, or maybe thought about this differently, we could have done this.
New perspective.
Yeah, new perspectives.
And I think another big thing, Commissioner, you talked about a long time about it, and it's actually true. If people out in the community know we're receptive, calls, emails, texts, they do about everything else, complaints, and, and that's fine, that's part of, that's what we look forward to, try to correct and, and take care of problem solving. But if they know that we're interested, to know their opinion about stuff. And we got, we got a wealthy talent out there that have worked at AK and Marathon and K-Stew, and in, in manufacturing elsewhere, in retail, that could help us a lot of ways. If, you know, we may not, to the letter, follow, but we'd like to recognize that communities all over the country have got more, they have more background information and expertise at home than we have out on the, on the road, and we should try to tap on some of that. Okay, so we'll, we'll try to put that together. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, then, first reading and approval of that ordinance is before the board commissioners, this is the point's been moved and said.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Now, that committee will move into this.
Right, exactly. And I'm going to recuse myself, just even though it's partially funded, but...
This will be the first thing that, that, I mean, it's engineering services, it's developed a plan, and that'll work right along with what we're, the information we wanted to get. Item B, I'm sorry, all favor?
Aye.
Oppose or want extension? Item B.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance of the City of Asheville, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a five-year extension of the Housing Assistance Payments Contract between the City of Asheville, Kentucky and Harbor Hill LLP regarding the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Project-Based Assistance Housing Choice Voucher Program for the Department of Community and Economic Development, adopted by ordinance number 104, series of 2009, and reveal ordinance number 55, series of 2018."
Someone? Have a second?
Second.
Everybody wants the second?
I can't say that.
Oh, you can. Voucher program? We all read up on this. You know what's voucher program. Second?
There's a second there.
Motion's second. Any questions? Any comments? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, Senator. I recuse myself.
Item C.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance of the City of Asheville, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to submit the program year 2018 amended action plan for a community development block grant to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of $577,434, and upon acceptance, subset applications from HUD to execute on behalf of the City of Asheville an agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to enable the city to undertake these activities and/or any and all documents associated with the grant submitted."
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, Senator.
I recuse myself again.
Item D.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance of the City of Asheville, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a public transportation grant agreement between the City of Asheville and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for fiscal year 2019 Capital State Mash Contract Grant for the Asheville Bus System."
Someone? Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, Senator. Item D.
Item E is first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance of the City of Asheville, Kentucky amending ordinance number 34, series of 2015, commonly known and referred to as the fireworks ordinance, to include regulations regarding the discharge of consumer fireworks and display of other fireworks in the city."
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have an issue.
Okay.
This ordinance says 10 o'clock, and we set off fireworks on the Fourth of July at 10:15 for the city, so I...
That doesn't apply. This is relating to...
Well, I'm just saying, if we're going to do it at 10:15, then we make the public be allowed to do it.
We took out, we took out the city and public stadium for football touchdowns, and the, the can go to all day.
I'm just asking that we move that time clock to 11 o'clock.
Okay, but you understand that doesn't have anything to do with the summer motion?
I understand it has nothing to do with summer motion. I'm saying, I don't want us to pass an ordinance for everyone in the city that, I know it doesn't, it doesn't apply to us. It doesn't apply to us at all. I get that. But if, if we are going to set them off at 10:15, then why can't the public? That's, that's all I'm saying.
And we just have a couple of days that we're going to do this anyway.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a very small window here, so I think 11 o'clock is fairly long.
And I concur with that.
11 o'clock. 11 o'clock.
I think 10 is fine, but I'll, I'll go with you guys, but I think 10 is fine.
But again, it's...
It's on the riverfront, for God's sake.
Well, and again, I think, I think to the, to Commissioner Steen's point, I think it's a narrow window anyways. And I think, I think we, we don't want to, we don't want to be more restrictive on the public than we are ourselves. And I think that's where you're going with this.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what I'm saying.
It's like you're going off on the rear front. They're going to move the...
Exactly.
Yeah.
11 o'clock's them.
Okay, well, you have first reading and make that adjustment for second. For final reading, okay. So, it'll be changed or second.
And you, you want that for all dates that are allowed, not just the Fourth of July when they're going off down here? Because you've got eight or nine or 10 other days under 10 o'clock, which was the direction of the last one.
I think 4th.
You want 11 for every day?
Fourth of July.
I'm sorry?
It doesn't make a difference.
The current date window is a 30 June to 4 July, New Year's Eve, and then the Blazer games.
So, I just...
Get set off fireworks on New Year's Eve.
When do they set off fireworks? How do you really set off fireworks if you're using, you mean, the people in their homes?
Oh, yeah, there's a lot on New Year's Eve.
That, you can live with that. We'll give this first reading, and you can frame it. All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights, Senator. I'd like to, I believe, counsel you to the point.
Because all we have on the ordinance is...
Okay, yeah, it is. It's an appointment by the, by the mayor. I'm just asking, Commissioner, to concur. Is that on your sheet?
Yes. Appointment of Robert Bob Hickman to the Asheville Cemetery Board for a two-year term that began on September 17, 2018, and will expire on September 17, 2021.
And that, that is, you know, the funeral home, the funerals have someone on that board that they rotate every two years, to my right. So, Mr. Hickman's term has come around. I appreciate it. All favor? Any other new business?
I have some new old business to revisit, because we all love this, revisiting the recycling issue. Actually woke up in the middle of the night the other night with a thought about how we can handle the residency requirement for the non-residents who want to use the recycling center. And I really, I'd like to make a proposal that we look into some sort of recycling pass. And I think that we could do that relatively inexpensively. I had in my head almost like a rearview mirror hanging tag or something that sits on your dashboard. I mentioned it to a couple of the commissioners, actually I talked to everybody about it between the last meeting and this. One of the ideas that was thrown out, instead of purchasing, you know, the little plastic tag that hangs, that we just get somebody to print those and laminate it and change the design each year and, you know, this is your tag for twenty eighteen, or twenty nineteen, this is your tag for twenty twenty, and the design for twenty twenty is different than the twenty nineteen tag so that you know that it's the new tag. Anyway, we get those printed, we put them out in the water bill for all the people who are already paying for trash pickup. They get their tag, and they don't have to show their ID, and they don't have to show their sewer, their water bill that shows that they're paying for trash. They stick it on their dashboard and they go on in. For people who live outside of the city, who want to use that recycling center, they can come to the city building, pay a fee, and we have to decide what that fee is, twenty dollars, whatever that fee, it ends up happening to be, that's the fee that's going to pay for the tags and also pays for the extra in, and it won't cover it, but pay for the extra in what's going in the recycle bins. And also for people who live in apartments that don't get a bill, they come in and show proof that they live in that apartment and they pick up their tag. And I think that that will really streamline the process in terms of going in and out of the recycling center, and you're not going to have the uproar of the people who don't live in the City of Asheville who want to use that center. This commission wants recycling. We're all in agreement of that, and I think that this is a good way to handle it.
I think it's a good idea. I would, and while you're talking about it, I've had a couple of calls and a couple of emails, only a couple, but, you know, people who live out of the city and work in the city that think that wrong tax, special out there to do that, we get to draw a line somewhere on this stuff. I think if, I don't know how many businesses, do we pick up, most businesses have a private pickup, is that correct?
It's a mix. We just had a case today where somebody had been using, actually the Boyd County Lottery, had been dumping, excuse me, putting recycling for years, and they'd been turned away when they found out today that they could use the city sanitation. They said, "No problem, switch it so that we can use recycling," as they wanted to. So we do have capacity to pick up businesses, I believe.
Well, I think anybody that's, I just think it should be related to sanitation pickup, it's recycling materials, it's waste.
As a resident, you're already paying for that pickup.
Yeah.
Send it out in the water bill and make your tag, and you just drive through with your tag.
I think, I want you, as a committee member, to work out...
You want me to design the tag?
Work out, yeah, you design it, work out, your picture going to be on it. Work out the mechanics and with the city manager and our director of sanitation streets.
I think it probably takes a lot of time to show the tenant the water bill and all that. I think we need something that's true.
Would you, just to be clear, right now, if you show a driver's license only that has Asheville on it, would you read? I think your proposal would streamline everything. And I like the idea of the people that pay that come in and purchase a pass, because that would pay for...
Well, and I think we also need to be very cognizant of people who may not be aware of that policy, and then they come in and like, you know, let them put their stuff in, and say, "Oh, the city building needs that."
We'll work on the mechanics of it and come back to us. I think it's got a lot of merit.
I like the center because it's clean, it's clean, it's efficient, we don't have the waste and dumping like we used to, but we can always tweak it.
Yeah, it's process, obviously.
It's a process.
Well, I think it's the best runner-up to...
Yes.
We can't afford what we want, so...
So I think we've done a good job on that. Okay, anything else? We've just made a motion to go into executive session on property, potential property acquisition, potential litigation, and the individual personnel matter. No action will be taken in executive session, only those three items will be discussed, and we come back, we later might not take any action, we come back out. So we shouldn't be back very long, going to wait. We appreciate you being here today, hope it was enlightening. We're in recess. Second? I'm sorry, good second? Motion, second?
I thought you said we're recessed, but we're...
Recess in executive session.
We haven't heard on the executive session.
All favor? New lawyer, he's a new lawyer for us. He is going to hold us to the, everything. Only items of potential litigation, personnel, and property acquisition will discuss, and no action will be taken, nor will there be any right now. Most adjournments.
Second.
Thank you all. adjourn.